...two thousand and twelve city council meeting to order. Will you please rise with me for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll.
Councilmember Francisco.
Here.
Hachkis.
Here.
House.
Here.
Mario.
Here.
Rouse.
Here.
White.
Mayor Schneider.
Here.
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Yes, there is one, Madam Mayor. We're going to remove item eleven, which is one of the closed-session items related to some pending litigation, off the agenda and bring it back at a future agenda.
Okay. All right, so we move on to public comment. I have two minutes here up at the podium. I'm going to start, I'm going to move this out of the way. Start with Kenneth Locke, to be followed by Dana Shore. Yeah. Kenneth Locke stepped out, okay. Dana Shore?
Sure.
Be followed by Patricia Clark.
Mayor and council, I didn't think I was going to be the first one to speak on the issue, but thank you for the time. My name's Dana Shore. I live at five twenty-seven West Pueblo Street, which is right by Cottage Hospital, and I'm speaking about the problem with the noise from the helicopters that arrive in and out of the hospital. The noise level that is occurring there is really unacceptable. It disturbs the quality of life for those of us who moved there or bought property there. Those of us who bought didn't know that we're going to be in the flight path to an airport, basically. It lowers our property values, and I don't know where all of you live, but if you had a helicopter flying at two hundred feet a half a block from your house, I think you'd probably be upset. I don't really feel that the city has given the proper response to this. This affects maybe ten thousand residents in the whole flight path, in and out of the hospital. I've called the staff. I asked for a response from the council, and nobody bothered to call me back. I did get good response back from your staff, the city's staff, the mayor's staff, and the planning department. I think that there's also a lack of information. I contacted the Department of Transportation. They claimed the city had input into what was going on at the hospital. When I talked to the city, they claimed there was no input. They didn't have a say in it. In two minutes, it's hard to say a lot, but I think there's either misrepresentation or, give benefit of the doubt, just bad study and presentation by the hospital. The number of flights per week was presented only to a week. We've been way over that. They give no information to EIR about how they came to that quantity. The market area is from San Luis to Ventura. They spend millions of dollars on a helipad for two flights a week? I doubt it. And this is a market area that's going to grow. The number of flights is going to grow, and the problem is going to increase. The future growth could be significant and therefore make it worse for us. The EIR has no indication of any testing on the flight path. I only cursory looked at it, so I didn't study thoroughly. But they did some testing. According to Steve Fellowes, it was up-and-down landings from a potential landing site. They did not do any sound testing that I could find in and out of the hospital.
One up, please.
And they did not inform the neighborhood about the testing, so that none of us could actually listen to the amount of noise that would come. So a lot of times what you have in a scientific study doesn't correlate to real life and how it affects us. So I would like the city council to be much more involved in this, proactively investigate what's going on at the hospital, what the real future is, and what we can do to mitigate the problem so that we can enjoy the houses that we purchased.
Thank you. Mr. Hachkis has a question.
Yeah, Mr. Shore. First off, we are working with the hospital, so you know, trying to solve the problem. We do want people's lives saved, as I'm sure you do, but also to preserve your peace of mind. Have you been taking a log by any chance or keeping a log of flights' numbers in and out when they come? I would suggest that you do that, if you could. Just note down, you know, helicopter eight forty-five, whatever, for maybe a week or so.
I have not been taking any logs. I do understand the hospital has been, and I assume that they're doing a good job of that. But if you folks would think it would be helpful, I can do that also.
Yeah, let me know if you would.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Patricia Clark, and then I see Kenneth Locke.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to talk with Mr. Shore.
Mr. Shore, if you could come back up.
I just, we, Mr. Werff did come in here, what was that, was that, two weeks ago, something like that, to give us a little update? And there was a discussion about having a soon update on the topic, and I hope that your name is on that list of contacts when that meeting does occur, so that you can participate in a...
I believe that's on the thirteenth of March.
March thirteenth, right.
At Cottage Hospital.
Unfortunately, I'm going to be out of town, and I was out of town the last one for work. But I'm not on a mailing list. There are passing out leaflets to a number of residences in the area.
Well, kindly give your contact information to staff, and then at least you can stay in the loop on this. This is obviously a long-term concern, and we'd appreciate your participation and input.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now Patricia Clark, and then Kenneth Locke.
Good afternoon, Mayor. Good afternoon, council. Thank you for having us here today. I'm also here to speak to the helipad issue at Cottage Hospital as a resident of that neighborhood and also just as a resident of Santa Barbara. I've been involved in affordable housing projects in Santa Barbara and many other nonprofit issues here, and I'm very interested in the health and well-being of our community. And so I would add my voice to Dana's to ask you to please be very conscientious about reviewing this process. And just in my very cursory look at the EIR and what's been going on, it seems that there are some issues that really need to be attended to. And one is, I'd like to know about updating the EIR apropos of the trauma center and the PICU that was added to the function of the hospital. I'd also like to ask questions about the general plan consistency with land use. And also, one thing that really concerns me is the safety impact of having a helicopter land in a residential neighborhood, in particular because apparently the helicopter pilots have been told to be very mindful of the fact that there's an MRI located in that building, which can screw up their navigational equipment. And I find that very disturbing to live in a cottage a block away from a helicopter pad, where the helicopters might actually lose their navigation. So I'm not going to speak anymore to that, but I just wanted to please add my voice to this concern, and thank you for your time.
Mr. Francisco had a question for you. Not for you. Thank you, Ms. Clark. Go ahead, Mr. Francisco.
Mr. Wiley, a question about CEQA and EIRs. What happens when the original EIR for a project that's been certified long ago turns out to have had an estimate, in this case, the number of flights, that turns out to be quite a bit at variance with reality? What does CEQA say about that?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Francisco, you know, an EIR is essentially a planning document, and, you know, it typically involves the preparation by experts and consultants that know this area. But as a planning document, it's a prediction. It takes the applicant's information, and it takes other available information, and for something like this in particular, it estimates what the number of flights may be. But I think the answer is, it's a planning document that's used to review the possible approval of a project. But once that project has been approved, and once the mitigation measures and the conditions of approval have been put in place, it really isn't feasible to revisit the document. It doesn't, it wouldn't make any sense to, say, reopen an EIR for a project that not only has been approved, it's actually been built. I think the alternative might be, if the project is revised in some way, or if there are other phases of a project that come in and need some form of city discretionary approval, it would be, I think it would make sense to factor in the new environmental baseline, if you will, into that new approval, into that new city review.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Kenneth Locke, and then be followed by Rick Rooney.
My name is Kenneth Locke. I think I've mentioned before, I'm claiming to be the Renaissance genius for the 21st century who's going to reform our educational system. I've just read in the paper, they're having, you know, they're going to lay off seventy teachers or something. What needs to happen is this education needs to be reformed, not this system fixed, as well as the whole basis of education. It actually provides the means for the community to be educated and also operated in an educated and intelligent manner. When it comes to meaning, I have a page on my site called "The Meaning of an Interdisciplinary Education," what the meaning is. It's actually based on the meaning in relation to, the standard would be, learning two subjects or two disciplines that have meanings. And what I provide, being the Renaissance genius, is I'm the enlightened genius of two disciplines, and I actually got to their meanings. I can explain it in relation to the arts, in relation to the abstract art movement of the 20th century, me being the last of the avant-garde who actually came to the realization of how painting is a spiritual practice. And then also through the means of tennis, through athletics, I provide the means for understanding tennis in relation to it integrating the mind and body, providing a holistic, healthy relationship, also a spiritual practice. So here I am. I don't know if anybody has the ability to apply what I have here and let me actually go to work here, but the problems that you have with education right now is just, you're just beating a dead horse type of situation. And again, it needs to be reformed, which will actually reform, say, this community. It is a big pill to swallow type of situation, but again, I'm just here to pass along this information. Thank you.
Rick Rooney will be followed by Kate Longstory, and the final speaker will be Tim King.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, council members. I'm a resident of the county, not the city, but I enjoy Santa Barbara greatly. One of the things we love is the Film Festival. My wife and I block out ten days and come down to see as many films as we can. For the past seven or eight years, we've seen twenty-five to thirty films, which means we walk the streets of Santa Barbara a lot, up and down State Street. This year, I was shocked by the number of homeless people. As I walked from the Arlington, the Libero, to the Metro, back and forth, after a couple days, I started counting. There were like a two dozen and more homeless people on State Street. Many of them were inebriated or high or something. Most were aggressively panhandling. It was a very uncomfortable environment. The Film Festival is a time for a showcase of Santa Barbara to the world, and to have this condition on State Street is just terrible. I lived in the Bay Area for many years. I watched San Francisco go over the edge. San Francisco used to be a place where you'd just love to be like San Francisco. They have lost control of homeless up there. If any of you doubt that, just go visit San Francisco. I'm concerned Santa Barbara is on the edge of that, because the radical change from the last several years to this year is enormous. I don't follow the council's operating. I don't know what your policies are, what exactly you're doing, but the one thing I can tell you is, it's not working, and something needs to be done, or Santa Barbara is going to change perhaps irrevocably and definitely for the worse. Thank you.
Kate Longstory?
No. Kate, Kate Longstory was first.
Are you Mr. King? He'll be right after Kate. Go right ahead.
Madam Mayor and members of the Santa Barbara City Council, I am Kate Longstory, and from now on, will be occupying this public podium, and will be sharing with you a weekly gazette. Last week, Daniel Ellsberg spoke at the Libero, a packed house. It was a night sponsored by the Nuclear Age Peace Foundation. It was important. He is an American hero and is now poised to be a leading visionary in the global, glorious and peaceful revolution. Also, last Sunday, there was a world premiere of The Jaguars' Nest at our Center Stage Theater. Kathy Maria was there. And the city and county government gave the playwright Maria Ross a letter of recognition for bringing community awareness to the challenges of mental illness. But that was not all. What was exposed in the play is that there is systemic and systematic violations of human rights. Our ADMHSA, our Mental Health Drug and Alcohol Addicted Association Agency, is defunct, and our courts are complicit. The last item I have on the gazette is that the fourth front of the Occupy movement has been declared. I hope you know that the Occupy movement has declared a corporatocracy, empire, and has asked that we end the war, all wars.
Thank you. You passed your time.
Oh, well, so March first for the Occupy movement is Occupy Education. The New Yorker magazine wrote a breakthrough article, "The Caging of America." "We must end the school-to-prison pipeline." Thank you very much.
Tim King will be the last speaker.
I'm here to, my name's Tim King. I live at four twenty-four West Quinto Street. I'm here to talk about the helipad also. I appreciate all of your calls back and the ability to call your numbers in the middle of the night whenever I was irritated and didn't know who to call. And for Grant to call me back at two twenty in the morning, I was shocked. I didn't expect to get any answers until the next day at best. But I do appreciate someone to call. It was totally frustrating to live in a house that we have for twenty years and have our neighborhood sound like the movie Apocalypse Now, basically, is what it sounded like. I played for the mayor. I did catch one of them. I thought I could at least play on her answering machine. But I have some real concerns about, after twenty years of living in a quiet neighborhood, I hope the city didn't give away all its power to Cottage Hospital to run this thing. I hope, as a city and as a community, we have a way to control it at some level. It concerns me if we don't. Cottage was very gracious at their meeting, but if you read between the lines, the bottom line is, they're a big business, and they're going to make money doing this. And in a very kind, wonderful way, they couched that all in, "We're saving lives." And I admit, they probably are, but I hope that we have some controls over this. It came across as, basically Cottage said they'd do what they wanted to do, and they'd already gone through all the approvals, and, you know, they didn't say it in that way. It was all there. He very graciously nodded, and when he didn't want to answer a question, it was the next person. So I understand the meetings, the monthly meetings with Cottage, and I'll be there to try and hear what they're going to do, but the proof will be in, is there a way to control it? Thank you.
Thank you. And that was loud in the message that you left. I heard it loud and clear. Ms. Mario, did you have a question for Mr. King?
No, I wanted to let him and you know, and maybe you all know already, that our planning staff plan to be at the Cottage March thirteenth community meeting. Mr. Wiley gave a short answer to Councilmember Francisco about a CEQA question, but we'll have someone there, according to our Community Development Director, Paul Casey. So a city representative will be there on March thirteenth to answer more questions.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Move on to the consent calendar. You have some items to read. Go right ahead.
Item three, adoption of ordinance for easements on tunnel reservoir property, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, an ordinance of the council of the city of Santa Barbara approving and authorizing the Public Works Director to execute a certain private road easement agreement with William Passage, George V. Valois and Sheri R. Valois trustees, Carolyn V. Cooper trustee, Frederica McKay Thompson trustee, and Joel J. Birdy and Georgia E. Birdy trustees, granting and acknowledging private easements for the continuing use and maintenance of Spyglass Ridge Road, including public utilities located on a portion of the Tunnel Trail property, sometimes known as Tunnel Reservoir Property, owned by the city of Santa Barbara, for ingress and egress to properties located in the county of Santa Barbara, known as two-eight-two-five, two-eight-four-five, two-eight-seven-five, two-eight-eight-five, and two-eight-nine-five Spyglass Ridge Road. And item four, resolution to amend rules and regulations for the Santa Barbara mooring area, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only, a resolution of the council of the city of Santa Barbara establishing rules and regulations for issuing mooring permits in the city of Santa Barbara mooring area, setting minimum specifications for installing, inspecting, and repairing such moorings, and repealing resolution number zero-nine-zero-seven-five.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We had a request to remove items one and five. Ms. Mario, you just wanted to abstain from item one, is that correct?
Well, I can vote for the January tenth meeting, but not the August sixteenth minutes, right? Can we separate those? Please.
Yep, we could do that. So why don't we just do, which one, the August, we can do the August sixteenth minutes separately, and then we'll just, we can do the rest of the consent calendar, but then you also want to talk about item five. So is there a motion for the August sixteenth meeting minutes?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye? One abstained.
Abstained.
Okay. And then item number five, Ms. Mario, you wanted to pull that out.
Thank you.
And actually, if the clerk could just read the item.
Okay.
Exclusive right to negotiate agreement with Marborg Industries.
Thank you, Ms. Maria. Go right ahead.
Okay. I'm pulling item five, because I would like to vote against the recommendation. In the last month or so, I did tour the Marborg facilities, and it was an educational experience. It was a pleasure to see their operations and meet their employees. And I do acknowledge Marborg's contribution to the community and its citizenship, but I do remain convinced that the city would have benefited from an open, competitive bidding process for the Zone One contract. So with all due respect, I can't vote for exclusive negotiations.
Okay. Mr. House?
Actually, I realized I wasn't here on January tenth. Perhaps we can take those minutes as well, so I can vote on the rest of it together.
Okay. We'll do that in a minute, but is there any other discussion on item five, or is there a motion for item five?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All in favor? Aye? And any no's?
No.
Okay, one no. Okay, let's go back to item one for the minutes. Is there a motion to approve the minutes for January tenth, two thousand and twelve?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention, Mr. House. And then the rest of the consent calendar?
Move forward.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Phew, God, you're testing me up here. Okay. Ordinance committee, report from the ordinance committee, Mr. House.
Ordinance committee met today to consider an ordinance amendments related to the construction that's prohibited in the vicinity of a canal landslide and homes that were destroyed in the T fire. The ordinance committee reviewed the staff report and has put together amendment that will come to the city council after today.
Okay. Thank you very much. Item number eight.
Capital Improvement Project's second quarter report for fiscal year two thousand and twelve.
Great. Mr. Kelly. As you're getting that, I just got a text from someone who's very excited about west downtown lighting being installed as we speak, so yay for that. So I'll just sort of fly on topic here.
Madam Mayor and council members, Pat Kelly, Assistant Public Works Director, City Engineer, and we are about to get this thing going. I hope. No, that ain't working. Oh, I am sure that the city TV will be up here in a moment. In the meantime, without the help of a PowerPoint presentation, I can begin to summarize the capital program that we have here in the city. You don't always need to have all the technology in the world to talk about topics, and let's give it a try. So I'm pleased to be here today to give you a snapshot of the city's capital program, which involves most city funds and city departments. Be summarized in some completed projects, capital, construction in progress, and design status. The focus of this presentation will be for the first two quarters of this fiscal year. So in the first two quarters of, thank you, Tony, the first two quarters of the year here, and we are ready to rock and roll, as the phrase goes, we completed nine projects, nine notices of completion. And the data that we have here today is that we wait and report to you after the project is totally completed, and that's the data that we work from. So in the first quarter, we had four projects completed. As noted here, MODOC pavement prep is one, and then five more in the second quarter, both for, in both quarters for a total of three point three million dollars. Now, just for some reference, is that we have a significant amount of work in progress right now. In fact, we are slated to complete forty-five million dollars in the second half of the year. And last year, we completed twenty-six million, and next fiscal year, we are projected to complete sixty-four. So the amount of work that we do varies from year to quarter to quarter, but there's a significant amount of work in progress. Now, here's a graphic of the city, and hopefully you can see it better in the staff report, but it shows the location of the nine projects that we completed in the city. We have the El Cielito Pump Station way up here in the Riviera. We have some pavement prep over here on MODOC, and a significant amount of work done here at El Estero and other locations within the city. And of course, one of the big ones is some work that we completed out at the airport. So now we're going into the work that's been completed, and, you know, some before and afters. Some people get excited about curb gutter and sidewalk here in engineering, where some of those. And here's a project with over fifteen thousand square feet of sidewalk replacement, some new landscaping, trash and recycle receptacles, removing these, some new newspaper racks similar to the style that we have on State Street. So the project improved the safety and usability of the sidewalk from Milpis to the Cabrio Arch Pavilion by removing a lot of damaged sidewalks, a lot of trip and fall, trip hazards, and installing new access ramps. And here's some behind-the-scenes infrastructure at El Estero. Completed project consisted of upgrading the return activated sledge and activated sledge pumps at the El Estero Treatment Plant, things that a lot of people don't know about that is essential to the operation of the city. And here's an interesting project. This is a completed project of specialty items that weren't included in the airport terminal bid project. And specifically, this was the outbound baggage handling system, over a million dollars. Now, the award to the contractor was close to thirty-five million. Now, the award to the contractor was close to $35 million. And the reason why this was done, there was another specialty project also, and that was the bridges from the terminal to the planes. And this was, method of contracting work helped the airport defray the cost of the typical contractor markup without delaying the work and interfering with the rest of the contract terminal construction. So it was ways to, you know, manage the project cost without delaying the work and maintaining the quality of the project. Another hidden infrastructure, again at El Estero. This was a great project. We'd love to have pictures of the Carrillo Recreation Center. This turned out to just be a great project using RDA funds. This particular element was the wrap-up of some landscaping work to just kind of polish up the Carrillo Rec Center. And I think it turned out very nice. Moving on to construction projects, let me go back here a minute, is that there's like 22 projects in progress that Public Works is managing. There's many other maintenance and repair projects and other capital projects that other departments are working on. We get the nice, the big ones, and the total project of over $91 million. And this report will be featuring five of those. Of those $91 million, you know, the airport at $44 million and the Cater Treatment Plant project in progress are $67 million of that $91. So there's a lot of little ones, and there's some really big ones. Here's one of the really interesting ones that Creeks was able to get a grant for, and this is the, this is the fish passage and repairing habitat enhancement on Mission Creek. And what you're looking at is a focus, you can remember the trapezoidal concrete channel maybe of the, what we call the Caltrans Channel for Mission Creek. And Creeks got a grant to put in a low-flow channel with these baffles to encourage the passage of fish. Ninety percent of it is completed. Work continued on until November, well into the rainy season, and then our fishing game permit restrictions came into action. And so almost done, and we have a little bit of work left to do at the beginning of next summer. I do understand that the Creeks has been successful, continues to be successful in getting grants for this type of work, and I believe is looking at another phase of work in the summer of 2014 by another new contract. Here's a picture of, at parking lot 10, of the parking structure, and to do a seismic rehabilitation there. Right now, that work was completed, as well as the work at parking lot number nine last year. And right now, we're at lot two, so I think a lot of people go to Paseo Nuevo know about this, and we're trying to get that work done as quick as possible and anticipate to be able to open that parking structure no later than May. And here we're trying to come up with dramatic pictures of lighting in the lower west side. And so we have most of the layout done, and the installation of the new LED lights is scheduled very soon, with construction completed in April. Will be a significant increase in sidewalk lighting and also roadway lighting to brighten up the area. This is a key water resource project at the Ortega Groundwater Treatment Plant. A lot of demo going on right now, and that is going to take a little bit longer to complete the demo. All the work is going to take some time to complete, and we expect to have that completed in approximately a year. That project is, the Ortega Water Treatment Plant is right off Garden on the, generally the south side of Ortega, behind the survey, the survey office, that little office, I mean, I've noticed. This last one is the launch ramps down at the waterfront. And if you go down there right now, you'll see that to the left of where this photo was taken, the demolition has been completed, and they're going to be replacing this launch ramp. And when it's all done, it'll look very similar to this. Okay, moving on to design projects. In Attachment Three of the Council General Report, there is a listing of, by funds of the 32 projects currently in design. The work that we have there, and this significant amount of work, $76 million, that we have in active design in Public Works Engineering. And this work is funded over several years. Some projects can be budgeted and completed in a year, and other projects can take 10 years or more. And all the work that we work from is from the Six Year CIP. So before moving on to a five-minute video that we have of the airport terminal, be available to answer any questions.
Are there any questions? I also don't see any speaker slips on this, no? Mr. White and Mr. Hotchkiss.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Looking at the design project highlights, I see the Chapala Yanonali Bridge is on there for, it's starting work on some, is this analysis of noise and vibration, is that right?
The environmental is now complete, and we just went to the Pliant Commission several weeks ago. And so we have our application into Caltrans to move forward with the next phase so we can start final design, and also right-of-way, limited right-of-way acquisition that we need for that project. So the work that you're talking about has already been completed.
And so on this, has a, has a design engineer been chosen for this project already?
Yes, the preliminary design is complete, and what we need to do now is move on to final design. So we anticipate that we're, matter of fact, we requested proposal from the consultant. We anticipate to come back to council in the next few months with the final design award.
And is that an open process, or is that, is that potent, is that a candidate to be an open process, or is that not?
The selection of the preliminary engineer, excuse me, of the engineer for preliminary design was done by request for proposal process. And so we'll be recommending to stick with that same engineer that was hired as part of that open process to move forward efficiently into the final design.
Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you. The Carrillo Recreation Center landscaping, $132,000 bucks, was that just trees and plants? That's a lot of money.
I had a similar question, and we went into the, into it, there's a lot of hardscape involved. There was, and including the, the wood, the specialty wood exterior treatments, there's a lot of brickwork.
Okay, well, I'm glad to hear that, because I, looking at those trees, I thought, those are expensive trees.
And that's total project cost, which is the design, construction management, the design, and construction management also.
Second question on the Mission Creek concrete channel, fish passage phase number one.
Correct.
Have we got any fish out of this yet?
I believe Creeks could report to you on that. The work is not complete, and it's at the top of the watershed. So, you know, Cameron and Jill could speak to this in more detail, but I believe that you'd have to extend it all the way down to the rest of the channel to really get some...
See, before we see anything, got it, thanks.
The best results.
Mr. House?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You want to know if it's time to buy your fishing license yet, Frank? Is that looking?
That'd be a real expensive one, too, I just want to say.
Mr. Kelly, I was wondering, I didn't meant to ask this before, but when we get these kind of breakdowns on these capital projects, if we could identify the different sources of funding that go into each of these, adding for public certification, and so that we feel smarter when somebody asks us those questions as well. I think that'd be helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, the video would be great.
All right, let's see if I can do better with this. And then...
After three years of construction, the new Santa Barbara Airport Air Terminal is nearly complete. The closing chapters of the project are moving the old terminal to its new location and restoring it, and also finishing the reconfiguration of the airport frontal road and reconstituting short-term parking.
We are closing in on reconfiguring the Terminal Loop Road. Within a few months, that will be open, and I think the building everyone loves, the Terminal Loop Road, we'll have short-term parking back right in front of the terminal, more curb space. And so the project is reaching for completion, but still has a few critical items of work that remain.
Early on in the design process, the idea to incorporate the old terminal as part of the overall project was key in developing consensus among the project stakeholders.
I think it was an important piece in terms of tying the community's love for what was then the existing terminal and the acceptance of something new, and I think blending the old and new was important. I think it really will add an important piece to the new building and be a real connection to the past for the community.
It was also important that the old terminal be a part of the terminal experience. So that's when it was decided in these meetings that the terminal would be saved, the additions that had been put on over the years removed, and it would be moved, razed, so it wouldn't take on groundwater any longer and be a part with the new structure.
And one of the criteria in making this project move ahead was the fact that we had to retain the historical structure and actually make it a daily functioning part of the new terminal. We couldn't just pick it up and stick it in one corner of the airport property and put a museum in it. We actually had to really work at making it a part of the main terminal.
There were many challenges to moving the old Santa Barbara Airport Terminal, a building built in the early 1940s.
Well, restoring the old terminal turned out to be a lot, I guess I was naive, it was a lot more complicated than I thought it was going to be. I knew it was, you know, it was an important part of the project, and being a lover of history, it was important to me personally. But the actual physical moving of the terminal was a lot slower than I thought, took place over weeks, not days. I sort of had this little event envisioned where those of us that were interested in watching it move would get together and watch the movers move it over to its new home, but that isn't how it worked. And seeing it in pieces, all held together by steel beams, it was a very interesting process.
When we opened the building up, we found that the building itself wasn't aligned as we had previously thought, per the plans. The walls were not framed as we had thought, the ceilings were not framed as we had thought. So we had to do far more demolition than we anticipated, and of course, that involves more reconstruction. So that's been a challenge, a pretty big challenge in this part of the project.
Other challenges to completing this phase of the project have been the limited curb side space and the temporary lack of short-term parking.
In terms of access to the public, that really the biggest problem has been the Terminal Loop Road and the changes that have taken place with that and the associated parking. Right now, we have no short-term parking because we're constructing a new short-term parking lot. So I think, in my opinion, those have been the biggest challenges for the public, is just getting the parking, you know, memorized, and as soon as they do, and the access, we change it because it moves into another phase of construction.
By joining the old with the new, the Santa Barbara Airline Terminal will have an aesthetic value that will uniquely enhance the traveler's experience, making a trip by air through SBA pleasing, convenient, and comfortable.
There'll be a courtyard between the old terminal and the new with a fountain and some landscaping. Probably the size of the courtyard will be about the size of the, in the El Paseo complex is a small courtyard, and it's kind of a similar size for this one. And I think that will be nice for people when they're waiting for family or friends, you know, they can kind of sit around and enjoy the weather. Also, in the historic building, we'll have our Security Operations Center and our parking office, and then the base of the tower will be a small history display, so people can wander in there and look at that as well.
Great, thank you.
And I'd just like to note that the historic terminal is now on its final foundation, and the Loop Road, we anticipate to have that completed in about a month. So it's going to, it's really closing in on being wrapped up.
Thank you. Any final questions? Okay, thank you very much. Move on to item number nine.
Police Department update.
Okay.
Let me, maybe we can take a five-minute break, and I'll track down the chief.
Okay, I think we're going a little faster than everyone thought. Oh, nope, there he is. No need.
Hello.
Good afternoon, Chief.
Good afternoon, everyone. Have a few things to go over today. Want to start with really some of the current things that we're investigating. So I'm going to start with the kiosk robberies and let you know where we are with those. Everybody's interested in that. We've had three, as you know. We've already put out some photos of who we believe to be the suspect. We are working also with the crime lab here in Goleta, the DOJ Crime Lab, trying to obtain DNA from the items that he has left behind, which would really be a tremendous find if we find anything. So that's where we are with that. We are also, however, we are working quite a few other strategies, since the second one, actually, and we're heavily involved in a lot of things out in the field to investigate this crime that I can't get into in detail in this report, but I assure you that we're on it, and we're utilizing a variety of ways to continue this investigation, which includes canvassing areas for videos from other businesses, going door-to-door, doing the media releases, and also speaking with probation and parole in our county to see if someone on their roles has done this in the past. So we're looking at MOs and other ways to try to identify the suspect by name. But we have, as you know, some pretty great pictures, some great photos, some great evidence, and we're just going to continue working it. We are actively working it every single day and every single night. That's about as much as I can freely tell you. Rest assured that we have quite a few people on that particular crime. In terms of Part One crimes, violent crime, which is homicide, rape... Well, fortunately, the subject, the subject that we just mentioned on the kiosk robberies we just arrested, according to Alex Altavilla. My report's over. We have him in custody. After all that preparation, he could have told me that before, I think.
Did you guys time that especially?
I need all the positive press I can get at this point. Back to, thank you, Alex, back to the Part One crimes. Those are considered the following: homicide, rape, robbery, aggravated assault. January 2012, we're down 29% from 2011, which is pretty great news. Property crime, however, especially burglary to motor vehicles, is extremely high, and a couple of you have emailed me recently to talk about that. I'm going to get into that in more detail in a second. But property crime would be burglary, larceny, theft of motor vehicle, which is really skyrocketing right now. January 2012, up 11% from 2011, and up 12% from 2010. The increase was in the burglary theft from motor vehicles, not necessarily businesses or homes, but burglaries from motor vehicles. We've made several arrests, but it is just really beating us down out there in terms of vehicles being broken into, including a family member of mine whose vehicle was broken into. So they're, they're going out there at different times of the day. There's real, there's no real pattern. So we have assigned a specific number of officers in plainclothes and also in black and whites with extra patrols, and continuing our vigilance, especially around the areas where there is a pattern, to see if we can come up with something there. But so far, we have not had as much luck as we have on our kiosk guy. So hopefully that good luck will continue, and we will, we will work on that. Clearly, on that property crime, especially... Clearly, on that property crime, especially burglary to motor vehicles, no violence involved, opportunists. We have a lot of folks still leaving their cars open, windows open, items in eye view of someone who's going to be a person to take it, an opportunist, and many times, it's just a crime of opportunity. They're gonna go in there, the door's open, there's something to take, they may take it. A lot of people have asked me if this is a gang issue or not. It just runs the gamut. A lot of our gang members are not doing this, it's just some people of opportunity, many of them adults. So we're chasing this tail a little bit, and it's really, really getting to us, and Danny McGrew and his team are working very diligently to try to work on that. I was asked to talk about Priority One and Priority Two calls. As you know, it's part of our P3 and part of our goals and objectives, we have a specific number that we would like to get to in terms of how long it takes us to respond to crime, especially to a crime in progress. Our goal, and it's a very lofty goal, is to get to a Priority One call in six minutes or less, or less. That would be any hot call in progress, a burglary in progress, or a hot prow in progress. A hot prow in progress means that you would be in your home and someone's breaking in while you're in it, and they're in it too. They're in your home while you're there. That's very serious. That's, that's a hot prow. A burglary in progress, and any alarm that has video that we can look at, those are Priority Ones. Priority Twos, which are not a crime in progress, for the most part, are any audible alarms. There's no danger to anyone, there's no one in danger at the time, it's the building, that's a Priority Two call. Silent alarms, Priority Two call. Now, I want to share with you that in November, our Priority One calls, which are the in-progress calls, our goal has been six minutes. In November, it was 6.3 minutes average. In December 2011, it was 6.7, and this last month in January, it was 5.7. So we beat that goal for the one month. Does that mean we're just working smarter? I think we're just closer to the call at that time. That's really what it is. We're all over the place, but we've been able to get there in a lot faster time than the previous two months. The Priority Twos, these are calls that are important, they're not in-progress, but they're Priority Twos. We like to get there in 13 minutes or less. We, in November, it was 13.9, in December, 14 minutes, and in January, it's 13.3. Now, in terms of numbers, so far this year, both Part One and Part Two crimes, we've responded to 1,349, 1,349. In 2011, we responded to 15,301, and in 2010, in terms of Priority Two calls and Ones, 15,714. That's really the average. We're on, we're at a pace right now to be at that level at the end of this fiscal year. But those are Part One and Part Two. When the calls come into dispatch, as one of you asked me to explain, they're prioritized just like I just mentioned. If it's an in-progress call, it's a Priority One, red lights and sirens, we're on our way. Priority Two, no red lights and sirens, but we're getting there as soon as humanly possible. Many times, especially on burglaries, because we have CSI officers, crime scene investigators, we have a variety of officers on each team that are trained to do fingerprint lifting and those types of analysis on scene at your vehicle, in your home. So you don't have to wait for a detective for the next day to come and do that. Every team has CSI officers to come and do that on the spot. That helps a lot. Most of our burglaries are being solved by those CSI officers and the fingerprints that they're lifting. It's very scientific. We have a full-time crime analyst in terms of a lab guy, if you will, Mike Ulamire, who has solved many burglaries just through the analysis of those types of scientific efforts. So that's where we are with that. In terms of crimes against persons, in December, we had 49 crimes against persons, which are assaults, domestic violence and such, we had 49, and in January, 48. Pretty, pretty consistent. Again, I want to hit hard the issue of our property crime. We're getting hit hard with the burglaries, especially the burglary from motor vehicles. Over the last few months, we've been able to arrest quite a few residential burglars, and some business burglaries have been solved. A few weeks ago, I think it was Councilmember Rouse who called one morning about the camera shop and other businesses, and while I was answering, literally answering this question, we were arresting six Westside gang members, all teenagers, who had burglarized the business, and we recovered all the property. Again, it could be opportunity, they could go into the store and, as they say on television, case the place, and come back later, look for vulnerabilities, and they'll do that, and that's what they did in this case. But our property crime is really beating us up quite a bit. We have enough people to work it, we're just having a bunch of people committing that crime more and more this year. Wanted to share a story that our narcotics folks put together, this given to me by Sergeant Baker, who's our sergeant in charge of our narcotics unit, and I just want to kind of read it to you very quickly here, that, you know, over the last couple of weeks, we've been working a couple of residences on Nopal Street, 300 block of Nopal Street, this public information, at this point, we've made arrests. We've surveilled a couple of the residents there, dealing narcotics, a variety types of narcotics, and on February 17th, while we were observing this location, while sales were going down, we noticed a variety of very small children playing in the yard and playing in the porch while all these dope deals are going on, and we decided to just take the place for the safety of the children. So we did. We got a search warrant for the residents, the person in charge of the home and in charge of the dope dealing was arrested, and out of that, we got 12 grams of cocaine, also four ounces, four other ounces of cocaine in the vehicle, in the car, and $814 in cash that they had no idea how it ended up in their house. Imagine that. The approximate street value of the cocaine that day was over $3,000, $3,200. The point being that we take all of these complaints very seriously. My narcotics folks do a great job of investigating, and we were going to, as they say, work this house to see if other deals would come through to fruition. The problem was, once we saw a variety of little children in and out of the house during the sales of narcotics, we just felt it was time to do what we had to do, and so we did Wanted to touch quickly on our restorative policing team. I thank you so much for your direction and inspiration and motivation to do this and hire some folks to help us with the homeless, mentally ill out there. We have really done a great job in terms, in two, in two avenues. Number one, in sites and arrests, they're up. I'm not gonna bore you with all the numbers. What's really interesting is that of the many arrests that we've made, we've done some follow-ups with all of those arrestees, and in the last couple of months, we have reunited 12 folks who were in our streets, causing us over 600 calls for service, just a dozen people, okay, just 12 people, who have been reunited with their families in other cities in the state and out of state. Kel Hove and, and the officers in charge of that unit, Sergeant Olson, have done a tremendous job of working with those non-sworn folks that you asked me to bring on in addressing some of those issues, not just in transporting some of these folks to facilities in Los Angeles and Anaheim and north of us, but to do a great job here in our city with reuniting many of these folks with their families, which has really decreased the crime, if you will, that some of these folks commit. And I think we're doing it with dignity, and I think it's working out very, very well. Terms of our police activities league, a few events coming up. March 24th, we have a PAL leadership conference. We have so many young people from our community, many, many of whom were former gang members and headed in the wrong direction, who are headed to this three-day conference on leadership, being sponsored by our PAL program, which means, again, as I've mentioned before, absolutely free to the families in this community, and we're really excited about that. We're also gonna help have at spring break something fairly new, which is called our Big PAL, Little PAL Camp. This is over the spring break for fifth and sixth graders, and I think all of you, and I think we can all agree that the earliest we can get to the intervention and prevention part, the better it is for us, and we're gonna start this five-day camp in the spring for all youth in the city of Santa Barbara, again, free of charge to our families. So if you're out there and you want your young boy or girl to go to a five-day camp for free, call our office, and we will set that up for you. We are not, we don't have a limit, the more the merrier. I think it's, it's a great effort that we're making. The status on the in-car videos, we're currently piloting one of our last in-car video systems. It's still a high-priced item, well over $200,000 to commit to a lot of vehicles. We're working with a company called L3 Communications, and then we have one more, and by April, by the time I face you in April, I will have who we've decided to look at seriously, and they will talk turkey at that time. But that's where we are. We've, we've had quite a few vendors looked at, they're all very nice, and they all want our business, and we'll see how that works. Lastly, well, not lastly, I want to talk about graffiti. A couple of you wanted me to talk to you about graffiti. It continues to be a problem. Again, most of our graffiti is not gang-related, most of our graffiti is not gang-related, and we've made some significant arrests for young people who have given themselves special names and special tags and begin to deface our community businesses, windows, doors, sides of buildings, and it continues. Fortunately, in working with Public Works, we do have a graffiti tracker program, as most of you know. It's been very successful. The tracker program allows us to keep tabs, and it keeps us on top of the analysis of all of the tagging that goes around town. It costs about $4,500 a year. We started this through donation, and we're just about out of money for that, to continue the tracker program, so I wanted to let you know that, just so you have that on your minds for a future recommendation I might make soon. Couple things on the hiring front, and then I'll end with our beat coordinators, but on our hiring front, not much has changed from our last report. We're at 141, we have 140 filled right now. Dispatchers, we have three vacancies, we have 15 filled out of 18, which we haven't been at in years, and we're very excited about that. We are now fully staffed with our parking enforcement officers, doing the citations and the gophers that you see around town. Records, we just have one vacancy currently. So we're, we're doing real well compared to a lot of other agencies on both the sworn and the non-sworn side. Along with those numbers, I want to include our restorative policing outreach folks. We have filled those three positions. Our community service liaison that's helping Sergeant Olson and his team, we have five out of the six hired, we currently have one vacancy, and we, again, we have permission to hire that one position, but we haven't found that person, that special person yet, but we're moving forward with that. Lastly, and I'm trying to put a lot of information in, in brief, my boss wants me to do it quickly, but he knows that there's no such word as quickly in my vocabulary. I try, I try so hard to do that, but I will tell you that we've had the command post on Milpus Corridor, we've had the command post on State Street, our officers are working out of there, most of them are getting out of their police cars. We have people assigned two or three days a week, full-town time, John Kattai working the corridor on State Street, and it's making a great impact. One of the people that's doing a great job is Officer Casey Butel. She's doing a tremendous job on the corridor. She is just, she's got it down. And one of the biggest issues, and it is an issue in our community, skateboarders, bicycles on the sidewalks on State Street, it creates a problem, and she has cited, I believe, more people in one month than we did as a department in a year prior to having four beat coordinators. And it's not that we weren't looking for it, but we have to prioritize our issues. And with four beat coordinators now, we're able to address the Milpus Corridor, the parks, and all the other places that we felt were a priority in terms of enforcement and intervention and prevention. I'm not gonna go over all that they've done, but all six beats are being thoroughly covered. They're visiting all the schools, they're visiting all the parks, and we're really setting the tone. What they've also done is begun a crusade where the patrol officers who work regular beats are visiting the schools before and after school, chatting with the families and chatting with the children, and getting out of their police cars, which has been an issue for us in years past due to, to resources. That is my report, as quickly as I could give it to you, and I'd be glad to take any of your questions.
Thank you. I don't see any public speaker slips? No? Okay. Mr. Hotchkiss?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just to sort of scatter and questions here. Are the car thefts, are matters of opportunity, is that stuff usually fenced or kept?
It depends. You know, a lot of folks have been saying that, you know, a lot of people recently, in fact, the last couple of weeks, the issue is change being taken out of the glove box or, you know, things like that. Obviously, that's gone. We have had quite a few laptops, CD players, taken from vehicles that are, that are in plain sight. That's happening a lot. And quite a few, not quite a third, people have told us, well, I want to make a report, but I did leave my car open last night. So it's, it's one of those things. We have a great relationship and a great pawn program with our pawn shops in town. We don't have that many, I think one or two, where they and we have a great relationship. Whenever they see anything suspicious, they immediately call Dan McGrew and his team, and we go and see if we can identify that from some of our reports. They're very good at doing that, and we've made some arrests out of that. So the fencing of it, the selling of stolen property still occurs, although not as much. Most of it is either being kept, and if it is being resold, it's not being resold in our community because of the, I think of the great enforcement piece we have with our pawn shops in the county.
You mentioned 49 assaults.
Right.
One month, I think 48 another. Is that typical year-round?
Yes. And, and when we talk about those assaults, it runs the gamut. It could be a felonious assault with a weapon, it could be a fight on school grounds, those types of things, so they're all combined into one. I'd have to, if you would like, in the future, I could really bring it down to each category of violence or non-violence, that's your call, I'd be happy to do that.
I don't think you need to do that in the actual report, it'd always good to see that on paper. I want to tell you, the NICSIL program from people I've talked to has gotten great response, so congratulations.
Thank you.
We had talked, two weeks ago, I guess, about something really simple, which is to have your guys wave to people on the street when possible, and I'm pleased to report that Officer Kattai today actually did that and saw me, and, but still, I think...
Did he wave at you?
What?
Did he wave at you?
He did, he did. Actually waved at me first. Of course, this was in the parking lot, so I don't know if that counts.
But that counts.
That counts? Okay. But I do think that that's a simple PR move that people should do more of, your people responding, of course. And finally, at one point, somebody called me with a complaint, you know, something didn't seem right, and I had asked you or Frank Mannix what they should do, and so I'm saying this for public now, that if there is a problem, they should just pick up the phone and call the watch commander and talk, and if nothing else, feel there is an outlet, a receptive outlet for, you know, in the police department, so that if there's a problem, at least it gets reported, or maybe there's a misunderstanding, but I would like people to know that they could do that. Is there a watch commander number available?
Yeah, I'm gonna give it to you right now.
Go ahead.
Just for those of you at home, it's 897...
897...
2376.
2376.
897-2376, and that'll go directly to the watch commander.
Thanks, Chief.
Ms. Maria?
Thank you. I'm glad you caught the kiosk robber. I was paranoid myself because I use the downtown parking lots. I did a ride-along last Friday with Officer Tom Echols, and I was impressed with him. He's a 25-year veteran of the department, and I got a really good look at the downtown nightclub scene. There might be something on the ballot coming up to increase the business fee down there, so I think it's really important to see what's going on downtown, and I also saw the taxi-cab situation. Chief, do you have a comment on police resources going to controlling the taxi-cabs downtown?
Well, you know, there, it's a double, I'll give you two answers. The first one is that we, on the front end, when they take out their permits, we pay close attention to who has taxi-cabs, their permits. They're in front of our building every, daily, several, getting inspections of their vehicles, inspections of their driver's license, insurance, so we stay on top of that administratively. In terms of out in the street, it's, it's quite the, as you saw, quite the scene, and we asked them to police themselves as best they could. We've had very few issues with the cab drivers while they're working, because they know that because of the administrative hammer that can come down, they're very, very careful. So we've had very few problems with them. In fact, we've actually had very little crime, if any, except for one time that I remember a couple of years ago in a taxi-cab, where the taxi-cab driver was actually the victim. So I think it's, I think it's well-done. I think that our downtown folks, when they come in the end of the evening... I think that our downtown folks, when they come in the end of the evening, they have a good relationship with the taxi drivers, and we try to keep that thing flowing, not just the traffic, but who they put in or not in their vehicle. So it has not been an issue crime-wise for us at all.
Okay. And I'd like to request a walk-along with one of the restorative officers, if I may.
You can go along with-
Do they walk? They walk, right?
They walk. Officer Kattai would be more than happy to take you to his, to his beat, and, isn't that right, John?
No problem.
And then on another subject, a gang injunction has been in the news lately related to the court case rulings, and I know your department provides statistics that, I was talking to Sergeant Olson before the meeting, and he, I just wanted to give you a heads-up that I was talking to him about sitting down with me and helping me interpret, you know, these, these numbers related to gang activity. So just to let you know, and I'm curious how, how that's going, because people are asking me what's going on with gang activity in the city of Santa Barbara. So, thank you.
Would you like me to make a comment? Okay. We do not have a gang injunction in Santa Barbara, and we're still working through that with the city attorney, and it's still in the court system, so it's out of our hands at this point. And hopefully in the springtime, we'll have some type of an answer. But in the interim, whether or not we ever get a gang injunction, we are, we are going, I promise all of you that we are always going to be aggressively dealing with our gang issues in our community, period, whether or not we have a gang injunction. If a judge decides not to give us a temporary one to start with, it, it is absolutely, whether we have one or not in this city, we are never not going to be aggressive against a gang crime, period. Whether you're a juvenile or an adult, if you decide to be a gang member and commit crimes in the city of Santa Barbara, the Santa Barbara Police Department is going to do everything within its resources to arrest you, and that's just the way it is. If they're going to commit crime, that's what we do for a living. We do it well. We're going to continue to do it well. But in terms of currently, we're very fortunate, very blessed in this community that gang crime overall is down, especially on the youth side. So good things are happening, and it's not just because we're the tough cops. It's because Parks and Rec is doing their thing, the schools, many of the parents, our Police Activities League, our business community, and people like yourselves and people in the audience who are mentoring folks. It works. It works. But as I've said many times, we can't save them all, but we're going to save all we can. It's their choice. I don't care how old you are. You consciously make a choice to join a gang, and you're going to have to consciously make a choice to get out of that gang. We can't force it upon you. We can come up with all the great programs we want. If they still want to be a gang member, commit crime, that's exactly what they're going to do. But many, fortunately for the city of Santa Barbara, are changing their lives and doing some positive things, and we should all be very proud of that and celebrate that as often as possible.
Mr. Rouse?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Chief, I can say it's, it's gratifying to see the, the active and present officers out on the street these days, and I can speak for both the downtown organization, the Milpus organizations, that get a lot of positive feedback. One concern I have gotten, you touched on this briefly about the property crime from some of the neighborhoods, is about, not for the hot, necessarily the hot crime, but the, the reports thereafter, the crime reports thereafter. Could you touch briefly on how you prioritize when you get to a, a scene, to, and who makes the report, and how that goes on? Some folks have felt that it took longer than it should have, and they're concerned, and they're, they're scared, and I didn't know if there was a way to describe your, your priority of dispatch, how that, how that goes forward.
Well, in terms of, on the dispatch, on the dispatch side, when they get those calls of burglaries in progress, again, red lights and sirens stuff. If it's a priority two where you get home from a night out, bad guy's gone, your garage is open, and you know things are missing, we're not going to go red lights and sirens, but we're going to be there hopefully within 13 minutes, which is our goal. The initial officer who arrives may or may not be a crime scene investigator, but once he or she arrives, they will call the one from that team to come to that scene at the same time. And usually what happens is the responding officer, the first responder, will begin to take the report, and if he or she is not a CSI officer, the CSI officer will get there, get a quick synopsis of the situation, and where the entry is, what's been taken, and they will begin their CSI work. That's how that happens. From there, it goes to our lab, or maybe to the DOJ lab, and so on. And yes, it, it, sometimes it is time-consuming unless something, a fingerprint or something obvious comes up, or we actually catch someone. But sometimes it does take longer, especially on the burglaries. But at the same time, these cases, after the report is taken, and the CSI material is, is, the evidence is obtained by the CSI officer, we have our detective bureau, which is Danny McGrew's team, our property detectives, who analyze the, the cases and prioritize based on the amount and the types of leads that they have. And that's how they will start working that situation. As an example, you get home and all of a sudden, one of my officers may say to you, "Well, anything unusual happen?" Well, you know, my neighbor and I kind of got into it the other day, you know? And we go knock on the neighbor's door. So there's so many scenarios that we could use. The neighbor kid always comes by and gives me a hard time. We're going to go talk to that neighbor kid. That usually will be done by the officers if they can, but all the cases on burglaries are going to go to our property detectives. Danny McGrew reads them all, and he assigns them based on his prioritization skills in terms of the leads that they have. And we start talking to our pawn shops, especially if they're laptops, furniture, paintings, and all those sorts of things. The detectives then start asking around the country, literally, for any MOs, modus operandi that might be similar in another city, and we start doing it that way. And the reason is, as you noticed, a few months ago, the people we arrested for the major burglaries in our city, were not, were not from Santa Barbara County. They were from Bakersfield, Las Vegas, Los Angeles. So we do not just keep it in a box in terms of it's all got to be, it all has to be a Santa Barbara resident who's a suspect. We don't look at it like that at all. We just open up the big box, and we just play out the scene and the MO, and the detectives take it from there. Yes, sometimes it does take long, and whenever you're a victim, it's never fast enough. I know that. But that's how it works normally.
But actually, what I was getting to is the initial response time, that was the main concern, but your goal is 13, around 13 minutes if, if nothing else is going on.
Right.
Your goal would be to get there at the same time.
Right.
Constituent asks me, I can say, "Well, we're trying to get there in 13 minutes."
Right. If it's a not, not in progress call.
Not a hot crime. All right. Thank you.
Mr. House?
Well, Chief, I was going to say, most of my questions have definitely been answered. I just wanted to appreciate you, and I think, like Mr. Rouse, we were both at the downtown organization meeting the other day. Officer Butel was there, and you had others. Actually, you had quite a number of your folks there representing you that day, and did a really great job. But the feedback from the organization, and also what we've heard from neighbors on the west side, has been pretty great about the presence and participation, and I think it has to do with the level of staffing that you have now to work with. Also, real, a lot of appreciation for the, the presence right on State Street, and then just, just being there, kind of, has been, it's almost beyond the actions, it's more the presence has been really appreciated. So just a matter of saying thank you very much for a good job.
Thank you. One of the things that I might add is that recently, we've done meetings with Pueblo on the east side. I attended a meeting with over 100 people there. They're very satisfied with what we're doing, especially in the schools. On the west side, we've made several partnerships with our Spanish-speaking community there on the west side and lower west side, and they're extremely happy, especially, especially the women's Spanish-speaking group only. They are so excited to have Casey there, and it's, it's been phenomenal, the successes that are happening within families that, you know, we're not going to read about, but are really happening out there with their kids.
Mr. Hotchkiss had a-
Just under one, just one report, I think you, I don't know if you heard this, but there was a lot of skepticism at one of the meetings, your guys going in there, and, and the community was really, I'll just say it this way, they were, they were not welcoming you warmly. By the end of the meeting, the reports were, they really felt heard, listened, and appreciated.
Well, I think that the obligation to make the community feel comfortable is on me. It's on me and my staff. You know, a lot of these folks, especially immigrant folks, come from countries where the police are not the friend, and really, that's a disadvantage for us here. How in the world can we expect them to feel differently when they're here if, if for most of their lives, they've been treated, mistreated by who they were supposed to trust? So it's been a challenge for us in, in certain communities, but I think it's working out well, and I think we just have to just keep chipping away at it, and I think it'll work out, I think it'll work out fine.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Just briefly, The Independent did a great job on Los Prietos Boys Camp, and I, I talked to a number of people who were really impressed with that. Nick, please tell Mary Ann that. But, and we're just delighted that we have that facility, and we've had it for a long time, they just didn't know about it, and it's had the success it has had. So that's just another piece in the, in the chain here.
It was a great article. I think it shared a lot of reality in what's really out there. I thought it was well-done myself, and I think those, those young men are making some changes in their life. Not all of them, but some of them are.
I thank the county for keep-on funding it.
Yeah.
I know a couple of years ago, there were some serious threats of, of cuts in that area, so hopefully that, we won't have to worry about that.
I encourage all of you to take the time to go during a school day and sit in the back of a classroom and watch that happen. It's, it's pretty phenomenal.
Or go to a graduation.
Or go to a graduation. Bring, bring your tissues with you on that one.
A couple of questions from me. You're mentioning hot prowlers, which can be particularly scary, especially if it's at night when you're sleeping. Besides calling 911, any particular tips for folks of what to do or not do? Does he keep themselves safe? I mean, do you lock yourself in a room? Do you, I mean, because if that's really something that's seeming to be spiking here and there, just any particular tips you want to say while you're on camera?
Well, there's, there's a few tips, but I think the best thing is to immediately get to the 911 call, and if you can, and if you have a way out of that bedroom or wherever you are, to get out of the house. If it's impossible to get out of the house, then you probably need to lock yourself in whatever room you can and keep dialing 911. That's really just a couple of very easy tips, but really, few people think about leaving because they panic, and everybody responds to it differently. But if you have an escape route, I suggest you use it and get out as soon as possible. But call us immediately. We're not going to ask you a lot of questions. You tell them someone's in your house. We're going to tell you to get out if you can, and then the cavalry will, will show up.
I was at an event yesterday with the Film Commission and other people related to film production, and received a compliment of your new special events officer. And I know, because I know officers transfer duties once in a while, and I think her first name's Annalise, and I can't remember.
Yes, Annalisa Hoods.
Annalisa Hoods. So she, so apparently, according to our local Film Commissioner, he's very happy with her, and, and-
Good.
But it's also a good way to remind people if they have a special event or need to deal with road closures, that there's a new person now to interact with.
Yeah.
And so I just wanted to share that.
Thank you.
And then finally, perhaps at a future update, I've been watching the, the county conversations, or just even statewide, about realignment and what that really is going to mean for us, because it's out of our control as a city when state prisoners are going to county jails and the funding associated with that. But obviously, if there's additional releases of nonviolent criminals, or what does that really mean in terms of our restorative policing program, or, you know, the whole jail overcrowding situation locally, I imagine that the city may become impacted somehow, or at least our officers would, and how they interact with probation and whatnot. But I don't expect any particular answers now, but as that's happening, it'd be good to know what the numbers are for our area, and seeing what we're doing and working with the county, both Sheriff's Department and probation on addressing those issues.
I can do that. I can do that, and I think by that, by my next presentation to you, we'll be able to give you some numbers. I will tell you that it is going to greatly impact the city of Santa Barbara, period. We are going to be impacted by that. And one last thing, not to correct you, boss lady, but it's, it's Annalisa Hoods, and she's not an officer. A few months ago, with direction from a council member-
Right. That's right.
We, we decided to civilianize two positions, and Annalisa Hoods is our non-s sworn, a non-s sworn person doing our special events, and we had a police officer who was doing our training, which is now a non-s sworn position. Sadie Lumen is doing that job. Both of these ladies are doing a phenomenal job, and both of those officers who were in those offices are now in patrol, which gave you an opportunity to put two more beat coordinators in the three.
That's right.
So-
Thank you for that correction, and I think the compliment from someone who deals with special events all the time to that person show that that system seems to be working.
Well, I'll bring your report on the realignment next time.
Great. Any other questions? Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Any council member committee assignment reports?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I was at Creek's Committee a couple of weeks ago, and hearing about the Mason Street Bridge and what that requires, and it turns out, we're going to have to condemn a house, actually, quite a big house, right next to it, and as luck would have it, there were friends of mine who lived there. So I guess they were grateful that they heard about it and learned a little bit more, and they're trying to make proper arrangements. But in any case, it, it's, you know, they're, they're very aggressive about moving forward with the Mason Street Bridge.
Great. Mr. Rouse?
Madam Mayor, last regular downtown parking committee meeting, we talked about two, two subjects we talked about was a cooperative effort between MTD and Downtown Parking to co-promote parking and the shuttle by trying to encourage people to park their car, leave it, and use the shuttle to get up and down town, so there'll be some cooperative promotional work with that. And also talked about the upcoming charging stations and what kind of inventory would be needed. There was some concern among some of the parking committee members that we didn't have really great data on the, on the actual demand for the parking, for the charging station, so, but it was agreed that they should advise to go forward with at least a half a dozen of them, at least as a pilot program, to see how the program works.
Great. I'll mention, I was at a Human Services Committee meeting. It was the last one of the grants presentations. It was the capital ones. Actually, Mr. Armstrong was there too, because the city also had their presentation, and those recommendations are coming to us, I believe, the end of March. But just to commend this committee again, that they, they go through a lot of applications. It's a 15-minute presentation per applicant, and they have that timing down, and then they have to make some very hard decisions with basically almost twice as much requests as we have funding to grant. So that's, that says a lot, and so they have a lot of prioritization. I think that's happening this week, or even today to start. So it's just a really interesting process to see the community need out there, and in our own capital improvement request, and seeing how that moves forward. So kudos to them. Any other council member committee assignment reports? Okay. Closed session.